Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the forty-second meeting of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland. I hereby call this meeting to order at six P. M. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Sorry about that. Councilwoman Simmons?
Here.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Here.
Councilman Mills? Councilman Cole?
Here.
President Clark?
Here.
Mayor Sidnor?
Here.
Y'all have a core, Madam President.
Thank you. And before we proceed, just to update any residents or individuals watching, we have a slight change to our agenda. We will not have Agenda Item Number Nine this evening. There will be more discussion in regards to the ordinance number two zero five two, based on our discussion during our work session prior to this meeting. Thank you. Now, moving to Agenda Item Number Three is the approval of the minutes from our October twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five special work session and our October twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five regular meeting. I hope everyone has had the opportunity to review those minutes. If there are no suggested changes, I will now entertain a motion to approve said minutes.
Madam President, I have moved that we approve the minutes as presented.
Thank you, Councilmember Cole. We have a motion from Councilmember Cole. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, and I have a second from Councilmember Mills. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilman Cole?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Simmons?
Yes.
President Clark?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving to Agenda Item Number Four, we will now hear our reports from the Mayor and City Council. I invite Councilwoman Christine Johnson to report her, to present her report first.
Thank you, Madam President. And good evening again, everyone. Briefly, my report is as follows. On October thirtieth, I had an opportunity with Councilwoman Clark to hand out candy to the citizens of Laurel. We probably had more fun than they did, but I thoroughly enjoyed seeing all the creative and interesting costumes. It definitely was a fun event. Look forward to that every year. Laurel Board of Trade does a great job in doing that, and everybody loves it. On October thirty-first, I was pleased to represent the city at the Annual College Summit held at Hope Christian Church in Beltsville. I know it's a little bit out of the city, but one of their members, Ms. Uday, is on our Education Advisory Committee, so she invited us to come out. It was their first one, and it was great to meet the students, parents, and presenters, and have the kids learn about the different opportunities available to them after high school. There was an entrepreneur there, someone from the military, even a pastor, of course, but it was great, and the kids were really engaged and asked a lot of interesting and good questions. And last but not least, it was good to see the community come out on Saturday, November the first, and Tuesday, November the fourth, to exercise their right to vote and choose who they want to represent them in City Council. So while I will not be continuing as City Council member at large after this month, I hope you know I will not be going away that easily. I'll continue to be an involved community member, and I would like to take a brief moment just to thank my colleagues. It's been a pleasure working, learning, and growing with you during this term. We've been through some things, but I pray that no matter what the focus will always be on what's best for the citizens. To the city staff, it's been a pleasure working with you in this capacity, and this may sound a little corny, but I tend to do that. But I appreciate the respect that you've given me in this position, and I appreciate your patience in answering questions and helping me get up to speed in the role. But thank you, thank you, thank you. So it's not goodbye-bye long shot, you know? Not going anywhere, not going far. It's just let's see what Christine will be up to next. So thank you all, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilwoman Johnson. You know every day we will miss you, but we will call you. Okay, next on our agenda, we will have the report from Councilmember Jeffrey Mills. You now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. So real brief, on October nineteenth, I was, had a good time at the Laurel Volunteer Fire Fighters Open House, and we were able to, you know, a lot of children was out there, brought, 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 brought the child out of me, too. I liked to climb up in those fire trucks, you know, and we had a good time. And on that same, on that same day, that evening, we, I attended the Laurel, the Muslim PGC MC. This is the Muslim Council for Prince George County. We had an annual dinner, and we had a lot of special guests. Sheriff Carr was, was there, County Exec Ayesha Braveboy, Senator, Senator Alsobrook, and Tyra Jackson, who is the, what is her, the, not Attorney General, sorry, the State's Attorney. And they were out, they came and spoke, and that evening, that evening, we raised over a hundred thousand dollars to, to support the children, to give them some initiatives to, you know, to kind of learn about the municipalities and even different programs and classes that, that we have for them. And so that was a great evening. It was over, over two hundred people there, and that small amount of number, we raised a large, small amount of number of people, but raised a large amount of money. And so I was very proud about that. And on the thirtieth, at the Trick or Treat on Main Street, yeah, the kids wiped me out. I had over, I had about five hundred dollars worth of candy, and they got it all. And I think I took a Reese's cup home. But, but that was great, that was great. I mean, it was good weather. The children were able to come out and just have a good time. The parents was right there with them, and they were, they were, they were collecting candy themselves. So it was, it was a good evening. And, and it was good to see people that, you know, the residents come out for, for election. I'm proud to say that I'll be running another two years, another term, and, sorry about that. Another term for another two years, and so I'm gonna try to learn as much as I can and help this city strive and thrive. All right? Thank you, Madam President. Happy to be here.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. Next, we will have Councilmember James Cole.
Thank you, Madam President. For my report, on October the twenty-ninth, we had the Pride Committee recap meeting to go over how the Laurel Pride Day went from October, October eleventh. One of the feedbacks that we heard from many attendees was accessibility, so we are working to make the twenty-twenty-six event even more accessible, whether it's for handicap or people that may not want to be as close to the stage providing seating. So we've, we've heard the feedback, and the committee will continue to work on that. If anybody has ideas for entertainment, we are looking for more additional entertainment to go on the stage other than what we've had is primarily DJ. I also attended the Main Street Trick or Treat. It was great to see the, all the children that were out there. It's always a fun event to just see everyone, especially the lower end of Main Street where the entire lane is shut down and everybody can wander in the middle. On November the second, I attended the Laurel Volunteer Fire Department Auxiliary Breakfast, always a great event that serves a great cause. The proceeds from some of the breakfasts, as many of the council know, went to cleaning the entire fire station from top to bottom. So one year of events can go a long way. The next one will be the first Sunday in December. This past Friday night, I went to the bonfire put on by Parks and Recreation for the Harvest Moon Hay Ride, another fantastic event with really good weather. It was nice to have the event back after it was canceled in twenty-twenty-four due to rain. This past Saturday, the eighth, I attended the Sturgis Moore Weed Cleanup from Laurel for Patuxent. It was nice to see all the neighbors out just pulling the Bermuda grass, trying to make sure the invasives don't take over that rain garden. I then have a huge positive and a thank you to the mayor. I wanted to announce that I introduced Hearts Incorporated to the mayor. I am always looking for a way to partner and help with animals. Hearts Incorporated will have a mobile veterinary clinic that will be offering low-cost services. They are a nonprofit, and they will be partnering with the city to provide those services to residents at least one day a week here in the city. So whether that's low-cost vaccines or spay and neuter services, it's still more to be determined what days it will be, what the rates will be, and how many days they will be here. But I wanted to thank the mayor and the administration for helping make that possible in the upcoming future. And that concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember Cole. Next, last but not least, we have Councilmember Adrian, Adrian Simmons. You know, I'm just gonna, at this point, just mix everyone's name up, and we're all related. Please feel free to proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate it. A couple notes. I was sad I was not able to join at the Main Street Trick or Treat. We, my kids had a parent-kid soccer game that night that I had to be a part of. That was a lot of fun, but I heard it was a lot of great times. So thank you for, for representing council out there that night. Over the weekend, I did have, have the opportunity to join with those who are placing flags on veterans' graves at the Ivy Hill Cemetery, right across the street from the municipal center. There was Air Force J ROTC program out there. There was a Cub Scout Pack out there, some members of the Ivy Hill sort of leadership community. Thank you to Lisa and Krista, I believe I've got the names correct, for organizing that event, and it truly is a great moment to just pause and reflect on those who have served our country, both men and women, and the armed services, and protecting the many rights we hold very dear. So and it was a beautiful afternoon yesterday, if you were outside, so it was just very picturesque. I did want to thank everyone for making the effort to come out to our election this past week. It really is good to sort of see everybody come through and sort of exercise the, the ability to vote and to be able to influence. So thank you for that, Laurel. It means a lot to everyone who participates, trying to do our best to help Laurel be the best it can be. I did want to give a hat tip to a couple upcoming events. Obviously, Thanksgiving is almost upon us. I think, you know, our next council meeting is gonna be right up against it. So next Tuesday, I think it is, November nineteenth, the Blessings Baskets Program is going to be running. This is becoming a sort of new Laurel tradition, and you can get Laurel Blessings, BlessingBasket.com. You can find that to be able to participate in providing a basket with food and a laundry basket and even some other supplies to areas. So definitely want to encourage folks to check that out. Hopefully, you see that online. And also, don't forget the Law, the Lars Turkey Trot on November twenty-seventh. That's how you can justify having the extra piece, a pumpkin pie, or sweet potato pie, or cherry pie, or all of the above. Come out and do that Lars Turkey Trot first thing in the morning. Help support that program. It's always a blast. There's great people, great energy there, and it's a big help to Lars as well. Two other notes, not to get too far ahead, but I know people might want to put this on their calendar before we get swept away into the holidays. December sixth is the weekend. Saturday, December sixth, is when the city's gonna have a holiday parade and the tree lighting and breakfast with Santa. So you may want to stick that on the calendar now before it sneaks up to you. And I do want to express a deep and heartfelt thank you to Councilwoman Johnson for her service and our time together. I know I have learned a lot from you, and you have served Laurel, and will continue to serve Laurel. So I'm excited to see the new ways. So thank you again, and return the floor to you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember Simmons. For my report, first and foremost, I also want to thank my neighbors and residents for your vote and confidence in the November fourth election. It's been an honor continuing to serve you, but to continue to serve you, and please know that I don't take that trust lightly. Since our last meeting, I've been actively engaged in our community, and I'd like to share some of those highlights with you. On October twenty-seventh, I attended our Education Advisory Committee meeting where we discussed important initiatives affecting our young people's futures. I want to give a big thank you, as Councilwoman Johnson said, to the Laurel Board of Trade and all of the board members for organizing another fantastic annual trick-or-treat on Main Street. Also, thank you to our local business owners and organizations who participated in this fun evening. The creativity in the costumes were absolutely incredible, and I had a wonderful time passing out candy alongside Councilwoman Christine Johnson while she sang her heart away and danced the entire time at the council table. It was very fun to watch. On October thirty-first, I attended the Getting Ahead Program graduation ceremony, hearing each graduate share their personal stories, their dreams, and their life-changing goals. While their children showed off their adorable Halloween costumes was really a heartfelt experience. Congratulations again to all of the graduates on this meaningful accomplishment, and well done to Director Marcel LeBlanc and Ms. Sandra. On November first, I had the pleasure of celebrating the grand opening of Milestones Enrichment Center with Congressman Glenn Ivy and the Cowan family. If you have not been there, it's a beautiful facility located at three-one-one Compton Avenue in Laurel, and I encourage you to stop by and see it for yourself. I also want to thank Congressman Ivy for his tireless work and what he does every single day on behalf of Maryland residents. On November seventh, I joined neighbors, residents, and council member James Cole at the Harvest Moon Hay Ride, where we enjoyed tasty hot chocolate, a bonfire that warmed the entire park, and a free hayride in the crisp autumn evening, which was absolutely beautiful going through the neighborhoods. It was wonderful just being bundled up in my cozy winter gear, but again, thank you to our Parks and Rec Department. You did an absolutely amazing job. On November eighth, I attended the Mayor's Veteran Day Breakfast alongside Councilmember Jeffrey Mills. The event featured many of our veteran neighbors, also Maryland Attorney General Anthony Brown, and several inspiring veteran speakers. To all of our veterans, thank you for your service and your sacrifice. Please know that your commitment to our country is, does not go unnoticed, and we are extremely grateful to have you in our community. I encourage you and everyone this week to take a moment to thank a veteran for their service. Earlier today, I participated in the NBC Leo Meeting with the National League of Cities, where we discuss best, best practices and innovative approaches to municipal governance. And as always, if you have any needs, questions, or concerns, please don't hesitate to reach out to me at kateclark@laurel.md.us or by phone. Please know that I'm here to serve you. Mayor Sidnor, you now have the floor.
Good evening. Thank you, Council President Clark. First, I want to say congratulations to all the council members on your reelection, and also gracious Councilmember Smith and Councilwoman Johnson. Pleasure working with you, but I'll say more about that in-person meeting, farewell meeting. I also want to pay respects to Anna Reward, Reward for the past of her father. She's an employee of DPW, so we want to pay respects to her, her family. October the nineteenth, I also attended the Laurel Volunteer Fire Department, their grand opening, always trying to recruit new individuals to be on the fire department. So if you got the energy and you want to volunteer in the fire department, whether it's Station Ten or Station Forty-nine or whatever station is possible in the state of Maryland, especially in Prince George County, please feel so to do so. A congratulation on October twenty-first, Maxine Barwell. She's one of our own. She live here in Laurel. She's on the Ethics Commission. She was appointed by County Executive Ayesha Braveboy and confirmed by the City Council, and I was there to speak her confirmation here and send some kind words for her. So thank her for the honor for inviting me to speak on her confirmation hearing. I think that's why she got voted on, my speech. Nah, but anyway. October twenty-second, we're congratulating Deputy Director Monte Burrows. Always talking about small businesses. We are within the smallest businesses in the heart of America, and we always have different organizations come in to teach our business inside the city of Laurel, throughout Prince George County, how to market and brand ourselves. So great job for you and your department back there, sir. Always continue to do that work, and it's all free events. So any events that we do here in the city of Laurel to promote your business, please come out and get that information. Hope House, their grand reopening, Hope House is back open. They should be starting seeing, um, clients soon. Hope House is a a treatment center, inpatient treatment center for those individuals suffering from substance abuse disorder. We know that substance abuse disorder is a disease, and have that right here in our city, that individuals can get help and get back on the right track. I really appreciate that. Veterans Day Breakfast, second annual one, big success. We had Attorney John Anthony Brown come out, like Council President said. He stayed the whole two hours, so we was very thankful for him for that, and, you know, really spending time with us. He's a veteran himself, so we thank him for his service. Today at Laurel High School, we had five, six senators come here to Laurel High School. Dr. Harris, congratulations, Dr. Harris, for putting on this event. Community Schools Coordinators, Community Schools is more like a social work program in schools, at high schools, middle schools, elementary schools. It's a wraparound service to get our kids food assistance, clothes assistance, anything for since they need. This community coordinator will reach out to those individuals. And Senator Brian Feldman is the, is the Chair of the Education, Energy, and Environment Committee, a big committee. He brought all his senators, his committee members in here, with Senator Watson, Senator Brooks, Senator Cazosa, and Senator Augustin. They was all here at Laurel High School. They got a tour of Laurel High School and presentation from Dr. Harris and Mr. Dinkin, so we was glad to be there to attend. It's sort of partnership that the Community Schools Coordinator have with the city of Laurel, and we want to continue that partnership as well. So great job, Dr. Harris, on that, you know? So some announcements. Of course, tomorrow we'll close for Veterans Day, so once happy Veterans Day to all the veterans. Thank you for your service, ultimate sacrifice, serving our country. I want to thank Deputy Chief Mark Felinsky for being a moderator for this past Veterans Day, second year in a row. So all the employees who is working inside to see all the veterans, not only our employees, but everyone inside of Prince George County, state of Maryland, throughout the whole world. Thank you for your service, and I salute you all. So I got some proclamations. I'm not gonna read them all. I'm just gonna tell you what they are. Extra Mile Day proclamation was November the first, so those individuals with extra mile, like this great City Council, I'll have to go extra mile, so thank you for going extra mile, doing the wonderful work you're doing for our constituents here. Municipal Government Work Month is November, so we got to thank our employees, you know, municipal government, you know, worked this that much. So pay respect to those employees, you know, thank them for their job they're doing. It make our job very easy. Along Council Wellness Month is November. Also, in American Recycle Day, I know Director, I mean, Ms. Blair from, she'd be happy for that, so that's November the fifteenth. So Recycle Day, so please recycle. And I got some appointments, Madam President, and I'll be finished. Reappointment to Roy Gilmore to Emergency Services Commission, eleven-ten, twenty-twenty-five to eleven-ten. I think that's gonna be a mistake. I don't think it's a five-year appointment. But we'll check the date on that, but we will reappoint him today, get the confirmation of the council. And also, appointment for Abdul, mispronounce his name, Remick, Remick, for the Same Citizen Resident Person Disability Committee, and that's from eleven-twenty-five to eleven-twenty-seven. So I ask for the council confirmation, and that concludes my report, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Sidnor. One quick clarification question. Would you like to hold off on Roy P. Gilmore for the reappointment due to the fact that you're not sure if that's the term, correct term, limit?
Yeah, I guess so. I mean, I can, I can look it up. We can find out before we get off. Madam Clerk, can you look that up for me right fast?
I'm on it, man.
Thank you. We had to hold off. She gonna look it up, so. I don't think it's five years, so it might be.
It looks like on our city of Laurel website page, it says three-year term, Mayor Sidnor?
Yeah, I think it's not five years. I don't think it's five years. I might be mistaken, but.
So it looks like it would be eleven-ten, twenty-eight?
Okay.
According to the website with the three-year term that's listed on the Emergency Services Commission page.
That's correct, and we go to.
Okay. All right. So thank you, Mayor Sidnor. Councilmembers, you have received the resumes for each proposed appointment. Do I have a motion from the council to approve Abdul Rup Nudan as a member of the CAC for Senior Residents and Persons with Disabilities for a term of eleven-ten, holding off, Ms. Green?
Council President Clark, it is five-year appointment for Emergency Services.
Okay, so we're gonna update the website, then. All right. Thank you for confirming. Um, so we'll go back. Do I have a motion from the council to approve Abdul Rup Nudan as a member of the CAC for Senior Residents and Persons with Disabilities for a term of eleven-ten, twenty-twenty-five to eleven-ten, twenty-twenty-seven, and Roy P. Gilmore as a reappointed member of the Emergency Services Commission for a term of eleven-ten, twenty, twenty-five to eleven-ten, twenty-thirty? Do I have a motion from the council to, to confirm the appointments of, as mentioned?
Yes, Madam President. I do, what do I do? I confirm, I'll make a motion to approve the appointment and reappointment as you had listed, a new member. I love it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second, here. Go ahead, Mr. Mills.
Okay, so which person?
I second it.
Okay. All right, so I have a motion, Councilwoman Christine Johnson. I have a second from Councilmember Jeffrey Mills. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilman Cole?
Yes.
Councilman Simmons?
Yes.
President Clark?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor Sidnor.
There has his hand up.
Yes. Mayor Sidnor, feel free to proceed.
Thank you, Madam, Council President. One more thing, two more things. Save this date. Every year that we continue this celebration, holiday reception, it's on December the eleventh, twenty-twenty-five, from six-thirty P. M. to eight P. M., and that's all committee members, you know, that serve on our committees. So we should, you should see the email from my staff, RSVP by November twenty-first. So once again, a holiday reception for all the volunteers that serve on the committees and things of nature. Please RSVP, my office for the holiday party on December the eleventh, twenty-twenty-five, from six-thirty P. M. to eight P. M. to be at the Partnership Hall. And also, the Zaders are doing our annual Thanksgiving giveaway, and that's on November the twenty-second at two oh four Fort Me Road from twelve P. M. to one P. M. So if you're in need of any food assistance, please come to two oh four Fort Me Road on November twenty-second. Start time from twelve P. M. to one P. M. Might go longer, but usually go fast. So that's the two things I want to say. Thank you, Council President, again for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Mayor Sidnor, and again, congratulations to Abdul Rup Nudan and Roy P. Gilmore. We appreciate your service to this community. Also, please remember, if you would like to be on a city of Laurel Board, Commission, or Committee, you can submit your resume in a cover letter of interest, including the name of the committee or commission you are interested in serving on to laurelmayor@laurel.md.us, or call three zero one seven two five fifty-three hundred, extension two one two five. We are now at Agenda Item Number Six, which is our general public hearing. This is your opportunity to share what's on your mind. What you have to say is important, and we're here to listen to whatever you would like to tell us about our city, from our services, our programs in the community, or even what's happening in your neighborhood. Keep in mind that your perspectives, concerns, and suggestions are vital to guiding our decisions and building Laurel's future together. I will now open the general public hearing at six-twenty-six P. M. Madam Clerk, for the record, do we have anyone signed up to speak today?
Yes, Madam President. We have one person, Danielle Delgado, and I'll allow her to speak when you give the go-ahead.
Thank you. While you're letting Ms. Delgado in, for our speakers, just as a friendly reminder, each person has three minutes to speak and will be called in order once you hear, or if you hear my clock chime on my phone on this side, that means you've reached the end of your time. Please be sure to conclude, and if you'd like to share any written items for the mayor and council to consider, please feel free to email them to our city clerk. You can please let Ms. Delgado in, and I'll, I'll remind her about calling her name and the state, etc.
She's been now, Madam President.
Thank you. Ms. Delgado, welcome, and thank you for coming to the meeting. Just as a reminder, you'll have three minutes to speak. If you could please state your full name for the record, your street, and the city in which you live in, please feel free to start when you're ready.
Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. My name is Danielle Delgado. I live on Woodbine Drive in Ward One of the city of Laurel. Once again, I'm disappointed to see your city failing behind on its promises of including. Once again, I'm disappointed to see our city failing behind on its promises of inclusion and celebrating diversity. November is National Native American Heritage Month, yet the city has not recognized this important month. As the U.S. Department of Interior Indian Affairs website states, November is a time to celebrate the traditions, languages, and stories of Native American and Alaska Native communities, and ensure their rich histories and contributions continue to thrive with each passing generation. I believe it's crucial we celebrate Native history and honor the former stewards of this land who were displaced from this area that is now Prince George's County due to European settlement. There are residents here who are indigenous to the Americas or who hold indigenous ancestry, and they deserve recognition, respect, and support from our city. Recognizing these contributions and history is not only about acknowledgement, it's about building community that values all members and their stories. My second concern tonight is behavior I observed online leading up to the election. Councilman Mills, I understand your campaign was harmed in the incident, but the actions you took that followed were blown way out of proportion, turning an incident into multiple online posts that disparage transgender and queer people, as well as making harmful comments about nonbelievers and atheists, like saying it's shameful to not believe in God, was deeply troubling. Even in my post on Laurel MD Connect, where I shared my digital smartphones display at the library, a post that had nothing to do with the election or the incident, a post that was meant to bring our community together, was used as a form to point fingers, stir up drama, and call people names. This behavior is unbecoming of a council member, and being a city council member is something that is not about party or ideology. It's about serving every member of the community, including those that you may not ideologically agree with. Disparaging entire groups of people is harmful, and as a member of both the queer and secular communities, I felt hurt by this. Laurel should be a place that accepts everyone, and it starts with our leadership. Our leaders set the tone for the city, and I hope to see better accountability from everyone, respect, and inclusion moving forward. And I also hope to see better adherence to the recommendations listed in the recently passed resolution on social media use policy for the mayor and city council. Lastly, I want to mention something for item nine. I know it won't be discussed tonight, but I hope it helps guide further discussions that you will have. I appreciate that this update is on the table and aims to support the missing middle, like the teachers, nurses, city workers, and others who often earn too much to qualify for affordable housing, but still struggle to live here. At the same time, expanding eligibility up to 90% of AMI risks leaving behind those at the lower end of the income scale. The families already on the edge of being priced out of Laurel. I'm also concerned that developers may prioritize sending, selling to higher-income but still affordable families, since those would be more profitable for developers, which could reduce the number of truly affordable homes available for lower-income residents. A way to bridge both lines of thought would be requiring a minimum percentage of units reserved for below 60% AMI, and allowing a smaller portion of those above 60% but below 90% AMI households to foster income diversity and financial viability. So I hope that the city considers this change, because we can and should be lifting up working families while also ensuring class integration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Delgado, for joining us this evening. To confirm, Madam Clerk, is there anyone else that is on the call that's, that would like to speak that did not have an opportunity to sign up?
There's no one else, Madam President.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Well, seeing that there are no additional speakers either signed up or here to speak, I will now close the general public hearing at 6:31 p.m. Moving to Agenda Item Number Seven is the Second Public Hearing with Possible Action on Ordinance Number 2051, an ordinance amending the General Operating Budget and Capital Improvement Program of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland for the fiscal year July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2026, and to provide an effective date. Here with us today is Director Michelle Saylor to provide additional context. You now have the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the City Council, and Mayor Sidnor. Ordinance 2051 is our second amendment to our FY 2026 Operating Budget and CIP. We're bringing $5.7 million into the budget and to transfer it to the CIP for the purchase and immediate security improvements to the purchase of property on Lafayette Avenue. The funds are coming from the Public Safety Surcharge Designated Fund of $1,977,086 and $3,722,914 from the unassigned fund balance. This action will still leave us our required amounts in our undesignated reserve account as we move forward with this purchase of the property. That's all I have for this, for this ordinance, Madam President.
Thank you, Director Saylor. Are there any additional questions from the council, aside from what you've been able to ask at the work session and meetings regarding this ordinance? Just making sure I can see everyone. All right, I don't see any additional questions. So seeing that there are no additional remarks from the council, I will now open the general public hearing at 6:33 p.m. For the record, Madam Clerk, is anyone signed up to speak on Ordinance Number 2051?
There's no one signed up, Madam President.
Thank you. With no speakers signed up to speak on this ordinance, I will now close the public hearing portion on Ordinance Number 2051. Adopt Ordinance Number 2051 approving the amendment of the General Operating Budget and Capital Improvement Program for the fiscal year July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2026. Do I have a motion?
Madam President, I move that we adopt Ordinance Number 2051.
Thank you. I have a motion from Councilmember James Cole. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from Councilmember Jeffrey Mills. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilman Cole?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Simmons?
Yes.
President Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Sidnor?
I concur.
Motion carries.
Thank you, and thank you, Director Saylor, and to the staff and administration for your work on this. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
But don't leave, because we need you again. Moving to Agenda Item Number Eight is the Second Public Hearing with Possible Action on Resolution Number 9-2025, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland, approving and authorizing the purchase of 114 and 122 Lafayette Avenue, Laurel, Maryland 20707, for the purpose of acquiring real property for city operations. Director Michelle Saylor, you now have the floor again.
Thank you, Madam President, City Councilmembers, and Mayor Sidnor, as we discussed at the end of October, for the purchase of, as you said, 114 and 122 Lafayette Avenue, for the construction of an evidence lab for the police department, along with storage for the motorcycle unit, as well as permanent training space, administrative office space for public works, as well as training and staff meeting space for public works, possible second salt dome location, and storage for various equipments to include the environmental programs, storage needs, and parks and recreation, and with any other department needs determined by the administration at this point. So it's $5.5 million, as we discussed with the ordinance. $5.5 is the purchase price, and we would like to move this forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Saylor. Do we have any questions, additional questions or comments from the council? I do see Councilmember Adrian Simmons. Please feel free to proceed.
Thank you, Madam President, and just to share a couple of comments. First off, just to want to express favorability for the resolution for passing, and I think on, on balance, it is a good thing with the expanding needs of the city. And also, I'm mindful it allows us to upgrade our DPW facility for the workers. One thing also in my, in my mind is the impact. I think as we look at real estate acquisitions within the city, keeping in, in the frame, the impact, the use for, commercial use, or economic use. But again, on balance, I think this is, in my opinion, a good move for the city. Two other, two, two sets of thoughts I want to share, and then I'll close out. I want to just encourage us as a city to really optimize our use for the highest degree of impact for the city's residents and for our internal operations, and I think we've got some good minds on this. And with basically $5.7 million investment, just to be sure that comes back in terms of ease of operations for the city team, and also impact the ability to deliver services to the city residents. And one resident didn't bring my, you know, or raised concern with me about the floodplain that's on the backside of one of the properties. I know we've sort of mitigated that and assessed that, so we want to be sure we protect our investment. And then lastly, towards future purchases, I think it is also a good opportunity as the city is growing right now, that we maybe sit down with some paper and get a good sense, okay, how many units we have in the city, how many trucks we need, how many people we need, how much space do we really need to be able to deliver a level of excellent service that we do, and then have that clarity for any future acquisitions. That'll also be able to allow us to be setting aside some, some money towards that acquisition. I know we end up tapping in a little bit to our unassigned/ rainy day fund. I'm confident we're still in a strong financial position, just to make that clear. But I think it'd be good for us to be a little bit more proactive, saying if we think there's a future need, we're also banking towards that, saving towards that. So thank you again for all the hard work that went into this, and I know there's more work to come on the other side of this. But, and I do want to express support. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember Simmons. Do we have any additional questions or comments from the council regarding Resolution 9-2025? All right, I don't see any. Madam Clerk, can you please confirm, since we have no additional remarks from the council, I will now actually open the general public hearing, I'm sorry, the public hearing on this item at 6:39 p.m. Madam Clerk, can you please confirm if anyone has signed up to provide a comment on Resolution 9-2025?
There's no one signed up, Madam President.
Thank you for confirming. Seeing that no one has signed up to speak on this item, I will now close the public hearing portion for Resolution 9-2025 at 6:39 p.m. Councilmembers, I will now entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 9-2025 approving and authorizing the purchase of 114 and 122 Lafayette Avenue, Laurel, Maryland 20707, for the purpose of acquiring real property for city operations. Do I have a motion?
Madam President, I move that we adopt Resolution 9-2025.
Thank you. I have a motion from Councilmember Simmons. Is that a second from Councilmember Mills?
Yes.
And I have a second from Councilmember Jeffrey Mills. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilman Simmons?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilman Cole?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
President Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Sidnor?
I concur.
Motion carries.
Thank you, and thank you, Director Saylor, Director Bailey, Director Miller, and the administration staff for your work on this. We hope that this is not only helps support operations, but also makes things easier for the staff and provides increased service support for our residents. Before we close, I believe Mayor Sidnor has a statement or a comment?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Once again, thank you, council, for this purchase of this building. Like we said many times before, this is for the long-term growth of our city, and it's going to carry us a long ways. But I just wanted to also say something on record that the city is a very inclusive, diverse city. Now, you look at the calendar of a whole year, you see various months of different ethnicities to celebrate. And we designated September as a month to celebrate multicultural month, you know, to celebrate things. So that's because we might not acknowledge a different ethnicity, background during that time of the year. Does not mean that we don't care, we're not included. I just want to highlight something. Indigenous People Month, what used to be called Columbus Day. As a council member, I sponsored legislation to change the name from Columbus Day to Indigenous People Day. So, you know, we are a very inclusive city, and just because, once again, we might not acknowledge something during the month, doesn't mean we doesn't care about our residents in our city. But this is one race, one world. We, we support everybody in this city. So I think it's kind of disrespectful to say that when the city dropped the bar and failed, we didn't fail anything. Now, our city is inclusive. We welcome everybody in this city, and we work very hard. You see a very diverse council here. And so we really appreciate you guys just giving us some leeway if we miss something. But, you know, we don't miss anything intentionally, but we can't celebrate every ethnicity holiday, because that's us. That's come September, we'll do that. We will continue to do that. We might not did it this year because of different circumstances, but September next year, the second Saturday of the month, we'll have multicultural month, and that way, every ethnicity in our city can come together at McCullum Field and highlight that. So that's what we're going to continue to do, but just because we doesn't do anything does not mean, once again, that we don't respect and acknowledge our diversity we have in this country. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Sidnor, for your comment. Before we close, I just want to say on behalf of the Laurel City Council, we want to thank Christine, Councilwoman Christine Johnson for her dedicated service from 2023 to 2025. Christine, your thoughtfulness, collaboration, and genuine care for our residents have really made a difference in our community. It's been an honor to serve alongside you, Councilwoman, and we're grateful for the positive impact you've made on Laurel. Thank you for your partnership and your commitment to our city. Did you want to say anything before closing our meeting out, Councilwoman Johnson?
No, that's it for now. Like I said, we have one other meeting, so that's it for now. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, well, thank you, everyone, for your time this evening. I wanted to remind our neighbors that our next regular meeting will be held on November 24th at 6:00 p.m. This will be a special evening, as we'll also be conducting the swearing-in ceremony for our newly elected council members, which will follow shortly after the regular meeting at 7:00 p.m. We hope you'll join us in person or watching virtually as we welcome our new council members and continue moving Laurel forward together. With no further business to come before the mayor and city council this evening, this meeting is adjourned at 6:43 p.m. Have a great night.